First of all.
Right now.
Thank you.
Fifty dollars, don't forget my website. Don't forget my website. What size?
Okay.
You have four. Four. Four in it. Four in it, I have this black one.
Let me play something. So others can see also. Come here. Wait, I want to play, I want to play something here, wait. Remember. Okay. Is the sound coming out? Okay, let's pick it from here, so. Could be better.
Please. Honorable Sonny. Can you check the gate? That's a vanva, and a lot of people are waiting, please.
Okay, let me know.
Yeah, okay, yeah, please, thank you.
And all our brave heroes. On the rising sun below our cherry. Beloved home and all our brave heroes. We must defend. Our lives of we shall be. We shall protect. Our hearts from all our hearts. Ode to the Christ. Is that our we all did. Then let us stand. With our love strength of him. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland. This be our solemn pledge. Defending thee. Shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood. Will count our freedom. The women's blood. That which and all is the free. Shall always be. A blood of liberty. We shall aim at. Triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible unscathed we pass. When we are born. The wounds of past to new. We shall remain. For those who guide in us. Then shall our throne. Let fill the glorious song. Of victory. With God almighty. Oh God, protect us from the evil before. And all our movements. Let's be going straight. Give us the strength. To heal the human is fall. To give and not. To come the cause each day. Let's all rule. To stop with friends or those next. To make this sky. All and all righteousness.
All hail be our birth. Land of the rising sun. Mean love and cherish. We have anquished all our enemies. All hail be our throne. God bless your throne. In him we trust. Shout it, sing it. All hail be our throne. God bless your throne. We have e much triumphant. From all our foes. Through the crucible unscathed. We passed victorious. Our trumpets reeling. The glorious song. Play it, sing it. All hail be our throne. Oh hail be our throne. We shall always remember. All that been missed. In the struggle for our freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayers shall be known. Of day and night. Say them always. All hail be our throne. All hail be our throne. No star shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom. Shielding us from the enemy. And the shield on the light and on. Your glory. Your glory.
Welcome everyone. To. The U S. A North and South American. B R G I Town Hall Meeting. We apologize for the delay in commencement of this event. Due to some other engagement that has held. The officials of the cabinet. Before now. And you're all welcome, both home and abroad. Um, honorable rap, Honorable Menike. Good to have you on the stage today. As we have come to join. In celebrating the achievement of. The Biafrans in U S A, North and South America, under your able leadership. And we also look forward to see. Um. The big pot of Nkwaobi. And the big cake of Pam wine. That you have to serve to us today. Thank you so much. Uh, we've done with the national anthem. So now you go with um. The opening prayer that is from item number two. Over to you, sir. And your entire team, your colors and when you need us, endeavor.
I see. Alright, uh. Is uh. Wada Okada Helen. Is she here?
Okada Helen Anujulu. Come on for opening prayers.
Let her raise her hand so that we can uh. Pick her up, please. Wada Helen Anujulu, are you there? Indicate, please, raise your hand.
Honorable Eche. Is she here? Can you co-host, please, um, can you co-host, Honorable Eche?
Say Che.
The Texas admin.
Eche. Texas. With what name is he in the Zoom? Because I can't find him.
He, he came in with Mezze, Texas admin.
Mezze, okay, Mezze. Yeah, Honorable Mezze, you have a co-host now.
Uh, the um, opening prayers will be done by uh, Wada Abigail.
Alright.
Is Wada Abigail here?
Abigail.
I think I see, I think I see, yeah, she's here.
Okay. Wada Abigail, over to you, you can unmute yourself. Can unmute yourself, you can start your camera.
Greetings, greetings. Chukwu Mchineke, greetings, everyone. My honorable admins. Honorable ministers. Good afternoon, happy Sunday. Nice to be here. Is anyone hearing me?
Uh, yes, you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
You can go ahead with the opening prayers, please.
Okay, okay. Thank you, everyone. You're welcome to today's um, program and event. As ordained by Chukoki Kabiyama. I'll start, I'll start by. Lifting up our spirit. Onto the Lord. As we remember. Um, what our leader said, he said. Biafra is our religion and our faith. And on Biafra radio, Biafra. He worshiped. Today, we are worshiping on the platform of Biafra Republic Government in Azai. And on this place, we are going to raise our altar of Thanksgiving. And offering and sacrifice as we come. We also remember the word of God that said, those that dwell in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. And um. Those that trust in the Lord. Shall be like Man Zion, who shall never be removed, ever standing past forever. We thank you so much. We begin by prayer. We begin in Thanksgiving. We have gathered together unto thee. We have gathering together unto thee. Unto the Lord shall the gathering of his people be. We are gathering together unto thee. Unto the Lord be the glory. Great things he has done. Unto the Lord be the glory has done. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Almighty and most merciful Father, unto your name. We have gathered today. To glorify you for the great things you have done. The great things you've done, giving us life today to gather again as brethren. As comrades, brothers, and sisters. Who look up to you at all times for your blessings. We thank you for great things you've done, you never allowed the enemy to take us out. You made us strong and formidable. You never allow us. To be overwhelmed. By the deceit of the enemy and the evil ones. For the great things you've done, you have continued to sustain and keep our leaders. Mazenam Dekalu, we are the enemy. Have incarcerated or kept him. You continue to energize him and strengthen him and renew him and make him strong. And refresh him. Even when beyond the enemy's comprehension. We thank you for the great things you've done. Upon the life of our prime minister, we are also the enemy has kept him. But Lord, we know you have preserved him, you have been. His source and energy and strength wherever he is. Talking about the freedom of your people. Biafra is a great nation, Almighty God, and you. I will pray for all those who have gathered here because we believe. They are one of the elected ones whom you have chosen from their brother's womb. To restore the kingdom of your kingdom here on earth, which is Biafra. Father, may thy kingdom. Uned, Biafra, be as the kingdom in heaven. Therefore, we bring everyone here before you, Almighty God. Into your hands of mercy. Those who are coming with their offerings of Thanksgiving. Their offering and sacrifices before you, oh Lord. We bring before you our A P M. The great man who is standing. In the acting capacity of our leaders who are not here with us. Father, we thank you in Thanksgiving for what you have done in his life. To have chosen him among your chosen. To spearhead this ship, Almighty God. And he is going to bring us to our destination. Together along with all our leaders. And all the families, members who have gathered here. On the same accord. Almighty God, King of internal glory, take eminence. I will pray to you, oh Lord. Guide us through this program. We also bring before you for what you have done in the life of our Biafra Liberation Armies, their commanders and generals. Father, oh Lord God, under your shadow they shall remain, you continue to protect them and defend them where they are in their locations. against the plans of the enemy, for victory shall be theirs and victory shall be ours. And at last, we all shall meet and rejoice in Biafra land. Biafra is our goal. Biafra is our aim. Biafra is our purpose and our mission on this journey. And Lord, we pray that everyone who will be bringing out from their pockets today, Almighty God, you will replenish them in thousand folds. You will bless every posses. You will bless every wallet. You will bless every hand, Almighty God, that is willingly going to make their offering and sacrifices on this altar today. Father, continue to energize us with everything we needed, Almighty God, to continue to propel and go on on this journey. Do not allow us to go down worried. Do not allow our shoulders to get down worried. Almighty God, bless us with the finances. Bless us with good health. Bless us with strong opportunities, Almighty God. Bless us with everything we needed, Almighty God, to continue on this journey. Bless us mentally. Bless us, Almighty God, for this is the time to know who are taught, those you have prepared for the journey. And Lord, we pray, Almighty God, you will continue to bless us with all needed to spearhead and prepare the journey and bring it to the destination where we all shall dance and rejoice in your name. May your name be glorified as we continue to welcome back those who have been deceived by the enemy or those who have been eaten away or choked away, Almighty God, by the chokes. Almighty God, King of eternal glory, bring them back to this genuine fold, that they will not miss out from the sheep, are those you have taught. May your name be glorified. Through Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
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 I didn't know we have many prophets like this in Texas. Thank you, thank you, Honorable Wada. Thank you. Okay, I think the next item is a special music dedication. Honorable Chinny, is that the one you mean I should play?
Yes, please. The music, the special music.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yenemeho. 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 Chukwokikebiao. Yere Biafraaka. Biafra is our national. We say bye-bye Nigeria. Biafra is our home. A referendum is our right. Biafra is our nation. We say bye-bye Nigeria. Biafra is our home. A referendum is our right. Iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Papi iji kerewo. Mami iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Papi iji kerewo. Mami iji kerewo. Ori bokeke. Masinwa di mano. Oka gune chenba. Ebili mi rige de rey. Okirikiri kama moko. Ima na diga liyelu. Go nyeweli kiliyelu. Igo nyete re no mano. Ahama di ke. Ezigo wachineke. The man will saw tomorrow. Ebili mi rige de rekuni. Biafra is our nation. We say bye-bye Nigeria. Biafra is our home. A referendum is our right. Biafra is our nation. We say bye-bye Nigeria. Biafra is our home. A referendum is our right. Iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Papi iji kerewo. Mami iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Papi iji kerewo. Mami iji kerewo. Yekuwe no we disi monono. Obato biye wado. Biafra. Chinye re nekelekiyo. Oh, standing in the camp. Oh, our people, when the hope was gone. Odogu masi signo debo. Pan minister. Atakanta, o se no. Iwochiri no bo. Umoli na nyana ti bi. Jajaj we go get to Biafra. The land of freedom is our right. Biafra is our nation. We say bye-bye Nigeria. Biafra is our home. A referendum is our right. Biafra is our nation. We say bye-bye Nigeria. Biafra is our home. A referendum is our right. Iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Papi iji kerewo. Mami iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Iji kerewo. Papi iji kerewo. We are going home. Mami iji kerewo.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Honorable, back to your program.
All right.
All right.
Can you hear me?
It's gonna be welcoming the cabinet ministers, admin, BDF, and Biafrans by Honorable Meneke.
Biafra is my nation. We say bye-bye to Nigeria. Biafra is our home. Referendum is our right. Are you prepared? Are you in preparation?
Yes.
So greetings, Biafrans. I ask you to join me in acknowledging the presence of our APM, and his cabinet members, the admins in the house. Let me seize this opportunity to also extend similar greetings to our heroes alive. Our leader Mazenamdekanu and our Prime Minister Mazis Simon Eba. We extend our warm and wonderful greetings to them. They are the star wars of our movement. And our Prime Minister has told us that when we re-declare Biafra, that we must defend it. And you know, God has a way of doing his things. When everybody thought that it's all, that all is, you know, basically useless, here comes our APM. And if we go by what the scripture says, God's told us that he is the one who puts people in charge. So if you are out there disobeying or not listening to all these appeal our APM has been making, therefore, you are really disobeying God. It's very simple. And so I seize this opportunity to welcome our APM. And I also like to remember those young men who are basically protecting our land. Now, it takes a very dedicated person to spend time in the bushes. Come rain, come shine, come cold, whatever, they are there. So let us also remember them and thank them because they are the ones who are really bearing the brunt of this pursuit of liberation. They are the ones that wish, we make, I mean, we are proud of what we do because of them. And so let us also remember and thank them. And also, we remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in all our prayers and their household and their family members and their relatives. And I also like to extend my warm greetings to all the admins who are able to make it. And those of them who are not able to make it, I'm sure they probably listening to us. So at this point, join me all Biafrans who have given me this privilege to acknowledge the presence of our APM and his cabinet members. Join me in welcoming him. Thank you, Biafrans. Thank you, Biafrans.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Honorable Meneke. And the next item, it's gonna be welcoming speech from myself. So thank you, Biafrans. I'm going to read my brief speech. Okay, so good morning, good afternoon, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, honorable ministers of the cabinet, our wonderful media ministers, APM Honorable Ogbe Chukwu Nkere, our allies and lobbyists, lovers of freedom in great Biafrans, de facto, home and abroad. My name is Chinny Apu, Deputy Continental Rep, North-South America, Brigi. I welcome you all to this magnificent USA Town Hall meeting event today. I say, no, no, you are all highly welcome, Omuchineke. I also eulogize our indefatigable beloved leaders who are here with us in spirit for their unwavering tenacity and love for our freedom. To you, General Adamebu Ojuku, General Philip Effiong, Lord Namdekanu, Honorable PM Simon Eba, we say thank you. Your immeasurable sacrifices can never be underestimated. We are very proud of you all and we will never disappoint you. To our honorable gallant BDF soldiers, Umooma, we appreciate and salute your resoluteness and incredible sacrifices for our restoration. And we pray that God, Chukwokikabiama, will bless, protect, and grant you all victory. I encourage all Biafrans and friends of Biafrans to please visit our website at www IPOV in USA.org/donut. Let's come together to do the needful for the actualization of our land. We pray for victorious release of our dear leaders, Lord Namdekanu, Honorable Simon Eba, Dr. Shu Ayaba, and many other freedom fighters all over the world who are unjustly held captive. However, freedom is our inhaleable right. We refuse to be intimidated regardless. Biafrans, we are almost there. Once again, I especially welcome you, our indomitable APM, Honorable Ogbe Chukwu Nkere, sorry, for honoring this wonderful event today out of your busy schedules. I say thank you, sir. Ibiala, thank you for your familiarity and bravery. Thank you for representing Biafra in Washington DC. Thank you for standing strong on the principles and templates of our Odogo Obatobi, which is clearly embedded in our Biafran shelter. Thank you for defeating all the enemies of Biafra with truth and honesty. Though they fought tirelessly to silence you, but the God of Biafra intervened. May they continue to vindicate you, Nke. Ory, afu, nangwa, I say isay. Nang, Jiski, we are right behind you. May Chukwokikabiama continue to guide you through as you uphold this great mantle of leadership on behalf of our PM Simon Eba. Thank you, everyone, and thank you again. All hail Biafra.
All hail Biafra.
Thank you.
De wano. So I want to dive right into opening speech by Honorable Chukwu Mezze Eche, the Texas Admin. And after that, he's gonna be getting ready to do the presentation of Kula Nots and breaking by the same Texas Admin. So please, Honorable Chukwu Mezze Eche, are you ready?
Yes, I am. So I want to say greetings, everyone. Greetings to all Biafrans that are listening, all the cabinet members, the media team, our men on ground, our supporters, friends of Biafra, and lovers of freedom. Well, our deputy American rep, she has spoken so well, it's kind of, I don't even know what to say anymore. It's like trying to make a speech after Bill Clinton or Barack Obama. But anyways, I want to begin by saying that to see evil and refuse to call it evil, that in itself is evil. So yes, our APM saw evil and raised an alarm, Mazio Gengere. You know, he blew the whistle and said, "I cannot be part of this evil. I would rather fight and confront this evil." And that's why we all gathered here today. So we really want to thank him. Because Mazenamdekanu said that Biafra can only come in truth and all honesty. So my APM, you are on the right side of the battle. What the enemy tried to do was to break us, but they were unsuccessful. They might have succeeded in slowing us down, but they can never stop what we are doing. So one thing I can say to you all to encourage us is that there has never been a time in the history of the war there has never been a time in the history of the war that evil defeated good. Good always defeats evil. Good always defeats evil. And evil does not last. You can already see what is going on in their camp. The camp of the enemy, and this is just the beginning. So we thank you, our APM, for standing strong and turning the gap. At the time, most people were confused, not knowing whether to go to the left or to the right. Thank you, you and, and some others who came and said, no, we cannot stand for this. We thank you so very much. We just have to be patient. You know, we will be patient because in due time, Biafra will come. It is said that the moral act of the universe is long, but it bends towards justice. So in due time, Biafra will be here. Just like our deputy, uh, admin, uh, rep said, we see what you're doing in Washington. We appreciate you. We thank you very much for your efforts. A man of few words, but yet doing major work underground. So we pray that God will give you wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to continue to pilot the development of Biafra. And once again, we say welcome to Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, uh, we're getting ready for the presentation of Kola Nots and Breaking of Kola Nots by the Texas Admin, Honorable Chukwu Meze Eche.
Uh, anyway, I want to say, is there any elders in the house? Anyone? That I can pass this on to? Anyone willing to accept this Kola Nots? If not, I will go ahead.
Okay, well, before, before you go ahead, please permit me to open cameras for maybe you may likely see a face that depicts that of an elder.
That's true.
Everyone can start their camera now. If you need your camera, you can start your camera now. If you need your camera, you can start your camera now. If you need your camera, you can start your camera now.
All right, anyone in the house? Uh, it's, it's Mazi Ogbe here from Germany. Mazi Ogbe, are you here?
Eh, Mazi Ogbe.
Mazi Kelo is here.
Mazi Kelo.
I can see Minister Kelo. I can see.
Hey Kelo, can you take this, uh, can you, uh, and place this Kola Nots?
We have many, many big, 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 big men here. I say make up my also, so you make your choice.
I think Mazi, Mazi Kelo is here.
Okay. All right, let me give him a.
So I have the Kola Nots here.
Okay, Minister Kelo, over to you. You can unmute yourself.
Okay. All praises to the Most High. Um.
Oh, praises, yes, sir.
So, um, I guess it falls on to me to break the Kola. I can assure you, I've not done this before, but all I know is that our elders, we shall just, it's a prayer that they offer when they are breaking the Kola. Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna say a short prayer. Um, I've been out of the, out of the country for a long time, so the proverbs, I don't know. I've forgotten the little that I know, actually. Um, so I'll just say the Most High, we praise you, Father. We are your children. It's true that we are in this position, and some may be wondering, why are we in this position? It's because we have not obeyed your commandments, but now, Father, we have called on you and you have come to now to re- liberate, liberate, liberate us. So we thank you, Father, for this. This Kola Nots, our Father, we are presenting it. This is custom that when we gather, we pray over the Kola Nots. So now, I am praying over each father that firstly, for our APM, that you continue to give him wisdom and stamina and strength to lead this struggle so that we will meet up with the schedule that you have for us in Biafra land, because you have a schedule. Even as our honorable prophets have said, that we will dance on the streets and glorify your name. We still have that. We know that we have a schedule with you to do that, exactly that in Biafra land. And so I pray that you will continue to be with our APM, who has the double mantle now of leading the finance and leading the struggle, that you strengthen him. Pray for our, um, angels, our lovely angels that you have been with, commanded by General Wutuzo. Pray, Father, that you continue to protect them, that you continue to provide the resources, Father, that you provide the logistics that will enable them to do that is necessary. And you will grant us victory through your hands, and we will glorify your name for that. Pray, Father, that, uh, as you have started to set fire amongst our enemies, pray that the fire we burn, all these secret counsel that they, they have plotted against us, even as your war say that every hidden thing will be brought out to the open. Pray that it shall be so. And that our enemies, that our enemies, all the secret councils will be exposed and destroyed. And they will destroy each other. For those who have spilled innocent blood in our land, especially the innocent blood of your children, Father. The judgment says that in Revelation, uh, I believe 10:14, that those who live into captivity must go into captivity, and those that kill with a sword shall be killed with a sword. Pray that your that your judgment will fall on those who have spilled innocent blood and continue to spill. That you, uh, you, your name will be magnified, and as, as this is done in the open, that the wickedness of the wicked will begin to abate there, and that your fear will return in that Biafra land again, to the glory of your name. We pray for those who are conspiring about us, those who are holding our leaders, thinking that they will destroy the struggle, Father. We thank you that we have gone over the hump and that now we're gaining momentum. And that the schedule we have with you, we should stick keep it on schedule. So we pray that Finland and Norway and all those that have, I, we know that they are under great pressure, Father. But those who are pressuring them, they are like, uh, cars that we soon collapse. They are dying, our Father. That Finland will see the light, see the love that we have for, for Finland, especially our Prime Minister, and do the right thing, and release our leaders pretty soon to the glory of your name. We give you all the glory, Father. Present this Kola that it will be acceptable to you and to everyone that will consume me, that it will bring health and to the glory of your name. This we pray in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, Yahshua Hamashia. Amen.
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 Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Honorable.
And, uh, I would like to use, uh, three hundred Ajema to take my own Kola.
Wow, wow, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, please, somebody said, uh, Minister Sonny did not close eye while praying. Please, uh, when I don't ever see where cameraman, they close eye when in the film event. If cameraman close eye, it'll also say the event will go upside down.
Find them. Oh, goodness.
So if I, if I don't focus on the camera, to film the event very well, now then I can't go close eye. Now so I go carry the camera, go film the wall instead of.
That, that, that the person supposed to close his eye now, what do you do? Look around for.
Okay, that's it.
That's right. How did he know they didn't close their eyes? Someone is looking at you.
For people, eh?
Okay, thank you. All right, we are back to your program. Thank you.
One second, please, um, I'm sorry, um, I appreciate you, Honorable Kelo. Thank you for that wonderful prayers. Uh, before we start, I just wanna alert, um, Honorable Sonny that the, our sister Amaka from Ohio, she needs her, um, title written on the screen. I don't know if you can help her do that.
Yeah, let me look for her. Amaka.
Thank you.
Is it Amaka's iPhone? Amaka, confirm if that is your Amaka's iPhone. Confirm if that is.
Yeah.
Confirm and mute yourself, Amaka's iPhone. Amaka, unmute yourself. If you're dead, close your phone. Amaka's iPhone. Okay, may, may, maybe she, she went to the other room. When she comes, when she comes back, we will, uh, fix that for her. We just need to be sure that.
Yes.
Uh huh, so, continue when she comes.
Okay, go ahead, Mazi. Yes, yes, yes. It's Amaka's iPhone.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe she, she went to the other room. When she comes, when she comes back, we will, uh. Ohio Admin. Okay. All right. Honorable, we can continue.
Thank you so much, Honorable Eche, please go ahead.
You got it, Deputy Rep? State Admins, the donations, right?
Honorable Eche.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you done, uh?
Yeah, 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 I'm done, unless you want me to announce, uh, my members.
Okay, no, hold on.
Okay.
So while we, um, proceeding, we're going to, um, call the state admins, you know, for presentations of their state donations. Um, Honorable Sonny.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's time to let in the state admins. They can please indicate by raising their hands.
Okay, Arizona, Maryland, New York, Ohio, of course, Texas.
Yeah.
Is, I don't know, California. Okay.
Maryland.
Uh huh.
Minnesota, New Jersey, New York, Ohio. Um.
Minnesota is not gonna be here.
South Carolina.
Uh huh.
Texas, Virginia. Oregon is not gonna be here. North Carolina, actually, he sent his donation to me.
Uh huh.
All right, so, um, let me announce the one for North Carolina. Um, it comes so, it comes so rest in peace. Um, they donated one hundred and fifty Ajema for today's, um, fundraising, and we thank them for that. For the state admins, please.
They can start their camera so we can spotlight them if we need to.
Ohio.
Amaka.
I'll be, Amaka, yes.
Amaka, you can start your camera if you want.
All right, let's start with, um, Arizona. Honorable, uh, Israel Kelo, please go ahead with your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um. Again, I appreciate all our Biafrans. Um, it's true that when, when we voted, we voted over, we had over fifty million, but here we are, only a few of us are driving this struggle, but, um, I encourage everybody not to lose heart. Uh, for those in Arizona, let me specifically make a call for you, you folks. I, I know that when all these, uh, are there. Um, I send out invitation when we created a new platform because this is the old one, um. I know one person kind of sent an insulting message to me, but even now, I don't even remember the name. So all of you are welcome back, all right? Even now, even the person that insulted me, I don't even remember the name. The only way I can find it is I go dig it up. But I assure you that I'm not gonna dig it up. So all you Arizonans, you are welcome to come back. Uh, uh, this is the instruction, instruction of our APM, our APM and our PM. So for Arizona, um, we have a donation of, uh, one thousand total, fifteen, one thousand Ajema total, fifty for Kola Nots and nine hundred and fifty for, uh, to welcome our APM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Honorable Kelo.
We move.
To Arizona.
Thank you.
We pray for more Woto Woto in the name of Chukwokikabiama. So the next in line is gonna be California. I don't know if California Admin is here. Otherwise, why we wait for California Admin? We're going to go over Florida? Florida, I don't know.
Right, just go ahead.
Florida is not here.
No.
What about Georgia?
Uh.
Maryland, whoever is.
Maryland, yeah, Maryland.
Maryland, Honorable Nony.
Thank you very much. Good evening or good afternoon, all the honorable ministers. De wano.
De wano. Uh, APM, you are welcome. We appreciate, uh.
Honorable Nony, we, we long to see your beautiful face, but your place is very dark. We can't see your face, so.
Really?
Uh huh.
I just put the light on. Okay, give me a minute, I'm sorry.
Maybe you change where the reflection of the light will be coming in so that, uh.
Okay.
On your face. You know that some of us, um, we breathe on faces. When we see beautiful faces of Biafrans, we live longer.
Yes, yes.
And when we, when we see Mama Nene now, Mama Nene just gladdens the heart of the young, young ones here.
Right.
Good evening, all of us. I thought I'm even late. De wano.
De wano, welcome, welcome.
Honorable Eche, no.
No, I, I was just rushing, thinking I'm already late, yeah, so I'm.
Uh huh, you're good.
Honorable, I looked for you earlier.
You don't go pay fine today. You don't go pay fine.
There were not, I'm not yet, so I'm glad to be with you. I'm just watching up there.
De wano, thank you so much.
Okay, um, please, while we're waiting for Honorable Nony, do we have Minnesota?
Yes, Minnesota, yeah. Minnesota sent, uh, sent in their, their donations and, uh, they donated uh, one hundred and ninety total.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Honorable.
Thank you, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Thank you, Minnesota. Thank you so much. So we are still waiting for other admins. We're gonna go ahead and call on New Jersey Admin. New Jersey Admin, Honorable Chimah.
Honorable Chimah, are you here? If, if you're here, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, I didn't hear, I didn't hear from him. I did not hear from him. So let's just keep going.
All right. Go ahead, uh, Honorable Nony is here.
Hold up, here. I can see one Chimah here, but I don't know if it's the one. Chimah, unmute yourself. Chimah, unmute yourself. Chimah, unmute yourself. Okay, uh, let's continue. Okay, uh, let's continue.
Alright. Go ahead, honorable Nonye, from Maryland, thank you.
Thank you very much, is it better?
Yes.
Okay, good. Alright, like I was saying, um. Greetings to all of you, honorable ministers. Uh, Mazi Emelike, greetings.
Oh, thank you.
Mazi Kalu.
This meeting is being recorded.
Uh, all the ministers, media team, I salute every single one of you. Uh, APM, you are welcome. Uh, we thank you for all you are doing for Biafrans. I'm a firm believer of, uh, you know, not just talking, but practicals, and we see what you are actually, the work you are doing for. For Biafra, so we appreciate that. Um, from Maryland today. Um, I have. Uh, sorry. I have myself, uh, fifty ajema. Uh, Mazi Emmanuel Chibike fifty ajema. Mazi Iké Udolisa fifty ajema. Uh, Mazi Emmanuel Akavontu, one hundred and fifty ajema. And I just got one. Uh, Genevieve, Wada Genevieve Nsude, one hundred ajema for today. So, that will be four hundred ajema from Maryland. There were no.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maryland, thank you, honorable Nonye.
You're welcome.
What are you doing, we appreciate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You're welcome. So, um, New Jersey not here? New York, honorable love.
Yeah, she's here.
Love, one thing to.
Hello, my people, my people.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am. There were, madam.
There were no. My greetings goes to our APM and his cabinet members. All the reps, admins, fellow citizens, lovers of freedom, and our liberation army. We can't forget them. I thank you all. Um, from New York, right now, I have. Two hundred ajema. Fifty ajema, I'm using fifty ajema to pick up Kola on behalf of New York. And I donate hundred. Ethel donated hundred, that gives two fifty, as of now, from New York, there one.
There were, thank you so much, honorable love.
There were.
There were.
I bless you.
There were.
So, um, next is Ohio. Honorable Amaka.
She should be here.
Honorable Amaka.
Meet yourself.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
There were.
God bless all of you for your good work.
God bless you too.
Hey. Bless us at the end of this journey.
Yes.
Um. My greeting goes to our APM. No, what come? No, what KJ Jamba? No. Irrespective of all the workload, you are here for us. Thank you so much for your good work. I know the shoe is too big.
Hmm.
But God's grace is sufficient.
Yes.
Yeah.
Eke. All the honorables in the house. Akamdele. All the admins. Akamdele. My greeting also goes to our BLA. Igwe Gidibangidibam. Even though you signed your death warrant. But I can assure you, you will not die.
Eh.
He said. Live to see Biafra. Without taking much time, I'm taking a Kola Nots on behalf of Ohio with fifty ajema. Thank you very much. I'll be right back.
Thank you.
There were.
Thank you.
Honorable. Thank you, God bless you. You see, Kay? So, um.
Thank you.
We call on, after Ohio, our South Carolina, honorable Mighty Dot. Mighty Dot, are you here?
You have Chima, Chima's here.
Chima's, okay, honorable Chima, please go ahead. And do your presentation.
And there were no, uh, welcome everybody.
There were.
Welcome, uh. We appreciate Texas for Eborji this period. APM, there were. And Mazi Abara, proud of you guys. I will pick up a Kola Nots for New Jersey with one fifty, on behalf of Jersey. There were.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, New Jersey, thank you, honorable Chima. Appreciate your consistency, God bless you. So, um, South Carolina. Our own Mighty Dot. Honorable Mighty Dot, are you here? Okay, maybe he's not here yet.
Yeah, we'll just move on, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, here comes Texas.
Okay, Texas.
Texas.
Yes.
Alright, um, for Texas, I want to start with, uh. Sayina Eziyada Helen. Uh, two hundred ajema for APM visit. Uh, Mazi Damian, uh, fifty ajema for Kola. Mazi Frank, thirty ajema for Kola. Sister Abigail, fifty ajema for APM visit. Honorable Chinny, our deputy American rep, seventy ajema for APM. And ten ajema for Kola. Uh, Nukwada Chinye, Amunake. Hundred ajema for APM visit, and thirty for Kola. Sister Uchenna, hundred ajema for APM visit. Sister Beatrice, thirty ajema for APM visit. Sister Lydia, fifty ajema for APM visit. Wada Tochi, hundred ajema for APM visit. And Stella. Wada Stella. Two hundred ajema for APM visit, uh, hundred ajema for APM visits. Hundred ajema for Kola, and hundred ajema for, she's the one that is gonna be doing our presentation today, the gift presentation, so three hundred ajema from, from Wada Stella. Honorable Amobi, our COS. Hundred ajema for APM visit. And Mazi Zanda Udo. Hundred ajema for APM visit, and fifty for Kola. And then myself, Mazi H. Uh, two hundred for APM visit, and I've already announced, uh, three hundred for Kola. So, altogether, Texas, we have one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five ajema altogether. There were.
Thank you.
There were.
Thank you so much, Texas. Texas, no, they carry last.
Texas, well done.
Amen, I thank you so much, you see, regardless the waves, Texas is still ongoing, we still stand, Didi Bam. So, God bless you, Texas. May Chukwukikabiama reward you all, and to all our admins and states that have donated. All our Biafran people that are donating, may you never lack in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Uh, can I, can I announce Virginia's?
Right, I was gonna call Virginia next.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the next is gonna be Virginia. Go ahead, honorable Emelike.
Okay, Virginia is picking up the Kola with a hundred and fifty ajema. And making a donation with three hundred and fifty ajema.
Okay. Thank you so much, Virginia, thank you, our honorable Emelike. There were, God bless you all. Um. While we're waiting for other admins to give us the signal. We're going to proceed to our next item, which is picking of Kola Nots. By every state, followed by general picking of Kola Nots. So, um. We're going to call the states, each state to pick up. Kola Nots. I think we already did that, but then, raise your hands. For Kola not picking and donations, please.
Okay, we have a make out by.
Okay.
Honorable, make out by, your, your hand is up, over to you.
Yeah. I greet everybody. And I salute, uh, our honorable APM. Mazi Ogenkere, and every other cabinet member here present, I greet you people, especially. The American people, North, South America, I thank you people for coming out, uh, a mass. On behalf of Aludo from homeland. I donate, uh, on behalf of Aludo, they asked me to give twenty thousand AJ. Both for Kola and for APM visits. And on behalf of myself, I am donating ten thousand AJ. Making it thirty thousand AJ. Uh, my other Aludo people will answer their name, they are all here. Thank you, and God bless us.
Thank you so much, thank you. Honorable Emeka Ubai, thank you, God bless you, thank you, Aludo, for your donation. God bless you all, thank you. So, let's raise our hands, please, for our Kola Nots. Abara Sonny, can you see them from there? Honorable Sonny.
Yes, I see Adasi, Adasi, unmute yourself, over to you.
I greet everyone, good afternoon, from here.
There were. Greetings.
I welcome deputy, I mean, um, I welcome you with a hundred ajema.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, God bless you.
There were.
There were.
Okay, let's raise our hands. More Kola not picking. Alright, so we are waiting for more hands up. And then, uh, before we dive into, uh, APM's address and speech. Let's pick up the Kola Nots, please. We also welcoming other, um, other countries and regions to please raise their hands. This is the time to do so. Let's pick up the Kola Nots. Honorable Sonny, um, while we're waiting, if you can play us, um, some music, or our BDF, um. Um, video.
Or I'll give you something very lucrative, I'm coming.
Alright, thank you. Omuchineke, let's do the needful, our land is bleeding.
Yeah, let us help out. Those people in, in, in Biafra land. Because many of us here can live comfortably. Uh, many of us here, you know, yes, we still have to work hard, but we, you know, we. Generally speaking, you know, we, we, we don't have to face all the, uh, problems that those people in the homeland are facing. And so, uh, let us look deep into our hearts. And realize that, uh. Onyagana one near. You know, we, we don't leave anybody behind. Is, 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 is our mantra. You know, it is very hard now, but in the end, I'm sure, that we will sing that song. That tells us that what we've done the right thing, and it's the glory of God that put us through. So. But don't be shy.
Thank you so much for that wonderful music interlude. It was a wonderful music. Thank you, our honorable information minister, Barawasani. Um, I don't think any hand is up for now. But while we waiting, we're going to give way for our indomitable APM's address. Come up, um our honorable Ogengkere, Mwachineke. The floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, uh honorable Junior. For all you're doing and the North and South American rep. Honorable Emenike, thank you. Greetings fellow Biafrans. Greetings to Biafra Republic Government in Azar, all the cabinet members, reps, admin and coordinator reps as well. We remember our heroes. We remember our leader, Odumewo Ojoku. We remember our leader Philip Ephion. And our two great leader, Mazi Nnamdi Kan and our prime minister, Mazi Simon Ebo. We appreciate all you are doing. Even where both of you are. You all decide not to still give up the fight of Biafra, but rather still keep the fire burning. Still keep fighting for the freedom of your people. We appreciate you. Our leader Mazi Nnamdi Kan, our prime minister, Mazi Simon Ebo. We appreciate our BDF that are guiding our land that are fighting to make sure Biafra is totally free. Please, uh if the COS is here, uh COS here, honorable, how would be ane? There's a COS here. Alright, if not, uh honorable Sunny Aborawa. So you will be my time keeper at this time. Because you have come to my knowledge that I don't talk enough. That I need to speak more, take more time instead of less time. Thank you fellow Biafrans.
Ah, APM, I didn't say you want to make I reduce your time, you actually increase time.
So be be my be my time keeper, thank you. For all Biafrans. A lot have been happening. A lot is going on and we all know after our declaration what have transpired. And that's the reason why there's a lot to talk about. Because we need to make sure that we put our house in order. It's a lot of work to to do. So please, whenever I'm here. I'm sorry if I take too much time, but I don't mean to. It's just because there's a lot of activities, a lot of stuff going on. And whenever I'm out here, I try my best to use the opportunity to talk to Biafrans as much as I can. And to also address the issue of what is going on, what we need and what is necessary. Every day by day, it becomes clearer. The reason why they are holding our leader Mazi Nnamdi Kan against his will, of which a terrorist state is always a terrorist state. A terrorist state of Nigeria, they did not go through the normal process. Rather, they kidnapped him from Kenya. And our prime minister, he was also called for so-called question. Day by day, we know the reason. Still for the same cause of fighting for his people. Just like the update I gave two days ago. Our prime minister will not be there forever. He will be out very soon. And our leader Mazi Nnamdi Kan. The Nigerian terrorist state held him for over four years now. They don't want to release him. And they haven't find him guilty of anything. The same terrorist state have ordered his release. But being a corrupt, lawless country, a shirame of injustice. The Nigerian state refused to let him go. Why we are not shouting, yelling every day is because we know what we releasing. I believe you will agree with me that our doing. Our doing, what we are doing is what we release our leader Mazi Nnamdi Kan. Because he, they did not kidnap him to hand him over Biafra in a platter of gold. Rather to stop the the restoration of Biafra or to stop the freedom of Biafra. Fellow Biafrans, keep doing what you are doing. Fighting for the cause that you believe. We must be a free people. Right before my speech, I have the privilege to have a phone call from Finland. Our civil attorney make it clear that our prime minister is pleased of what we are doing. If they think calling him for so-called questioning, we stop what we are doing. They fail woefully. If the Zou terrorist country called Nigeria think holding our leader Mazi Nnamdi Kan, we stop the fight that I'm fighting to free my people Biafra. If they think holding our leader, we stop the fight that you are fighting to free your dear nation. They all have failed upon arrival. Biafra is more than a spirit. Biafra is God creation. God created us to live in this beautiful planet Earth. God created us as a people to be free. I quote from Martin Luther King Jr. He said he have a dream that people will be free. That people will unite. Our dream as Biafra is that we will be free. We are not created to be in a same country with the Zou country called Nigeria. The Zou country called Nigeria is merely less than one hundred and thirty years. I have a question to ask. One hundred and forty years ago, what are we called? Are we called Nigerians? The answer is no. We are Biafrans. And we will remain Biafran. Fellow Biafrans. Those in homeland will feel the pain. Everything that is happening in our homeland today is designed by our enemy to annihilate us, kill us, chase us out of our land. Please, if you're one of those that participate on this atrocity, kindly disease from it. What will it profit you? If you work with our enemies and kill your own people. You need to ask yourself this serious question. Please kindly support the freedom of your people because it's a good thing. Because it's alright to live as human. Because it's our God-given right to be free. The enemy within you need to ask yourself serious question. For over hundred and twenty years, what have you benefited from the Zou country called Nigeria? Have Nigeria help your life? Have Nigeria make your life better? Have Nigeria give you the basic amenities of life? The answer is no. That's the reason why we don't want to be part of that union. Every day by day, it getting clearer and clearer that Nigeria done mean well for us. For that reason, we need to do the needful. To support our BDF. To support our defense. And for those of you that align against the BRIGA, that align against the Biafra Republic Government, that align against the de facto government, that they have asked the BDF to stop fighting for Biafra. Disease from it is a lie. There is never a time when the BRIGA or the acting prime minister as the liberation army or the BDF to pause or stop fighting for Biafra restoration. Please, if you're one of those that listen to these lies and believe on these lies, disease from it. And if you've been discouraged, one way or the other, from the event of what is happening for almost three months now, please kindly come back. Let's fight. Let's fight this fight together. We are all Biafrans. We more disagree to agree. Than in times of war like this. We need to come together. To fight our common enemy, the Nigerian terrorist state. Every Biafra is an IPOB. Whether good Biafra or bad Biafra. We all need to come together. Let's fight our enemy. Please, all genuine Biafrans. When you see what is happening in Biafraland today. I don't believe it gives you joy. Our people being killed day after day. Our brothers and sisters being killed by the Nigerian state day after day. Our women being raped. By this terrorist jihadist country. We need to free our people. I don't think it gave you joy. Seeing our enemy. Walking with some sabotagers in our land. Forming all kinds of militias that will fight against us. Forming all kinds of armed groups that will fight against the Biafran people. If you're part of those funding. All these armed groups that will fight against the genuine Biafran freedom fighters. Please disease from it. If not. You have become part and parcel of this crime that been committed against your people. Let us all come back. Let's come together. Let unite. And face our common enemy. I use this great country of the United States of America. Of which I'm proudly, is proudly a citizen as well. For example. The Democrat Party and the Republican Party. They always disagree to agree. But in time. Of them protecting their freedom. Both parties that disagree, they come together. To fight their common enemy. It don't matter what party they belong. When it comes to fighting their enemy. They set up example for the rest of the world. And I believe they set up example for we Biafrans as well. It don't matter what you have done in the past. Don't let what you have done in the past hinder you. From fighting for your freedom. Don't let. Because of. You don't like an individual. That is the reason why you decide to sabotage your people. Or the reason why you decide. Not to fight to free your dear loving country. We Biafrans need to unite. We all need to come back. We all need to fund our freedom. Please put your phone. Where your phone will be useful and do the right thing. Every genuine Biafran. Know who our BDF is. Every genuine Biafran. Know who is piloting. Our defense. Please come back home. No matter what have happened. It's time that we all unite and fight our common enemy. The world is watching. The world is asking question. They trying to see if we can govern ourselves. And we have some key countries. That have paying key interest in the Biafran cause. They are watching. Let's prove our enemy wrong. That we Biafrans, we can govern ourselves. And within us. Any Biafran that have that. Spirit of this unity. Please cast that away. Remember that the blood of Biafrans have been shed in millions. The Genocidal War of nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy. Of which over three million Biafrans were starved to death. And total of over five million Biafrans. We are must-. How do you feel about that as a Biafran? Do that give you joy? The answer is no. And when you look around all Biafraland. You will see all the illegitimate governors that are still parading themselves. That we already expelled from our land. They still forming all kinds of armed groups. To fight against our people. How do you feel about that? I don't think you happy seeing. What these armed groups are doing. We need to fight back. We need to get our land back. And only how we can defeat this our common enemy. Not just by the special grace of God. By your special grace as well. Doing what you're supposed to do. Supporting the fight for freedom. By funding your freedom. I appreciate every genuine Biafran that have concern. About our activities or that have ideas. Of what we say and what we will say. We also appreciate. If you can come on board as well. And fund our liberation. With the J and the Jemah. That you will be donating. That will take us a long way. Here in Washington DC. We have the privilege. Of getting a big favor from this current administration. Why I use that word favor? We are not fighting them to get it. We are asking. They should support us. They can decide to support us or not. We can't be stubborn about it. We need their help, we need their support. While we Biafrans are fighting to help ourselves. We need international bodies. International communities that will also come to our rescue. We believe we can achieve it, we believe we can do this. We also believe with their help. It can be more faster than it is. One more time, fellow Biafrans. It's time that we unite together. It's time that we come back and fight our common enemy. Please, if you have been misled before. It might not be your fault. It is because of false information. It is because of lies that have been propagated about us. Or about the Brigay. Or about the Biafran people. We are happy and we thank God that day after day, the truth is coming out. Everything that they have said about the acting Prime Minister. From the camp of our enemy is all lies. Please, whoever have problem with that. You can reach out to the Brigay office. Call and ask question. So you can be clarified. And for the fake news media. That are propagating these lies. Please, stop spreading false information. Stop deceiving the Biafran people. The more you deceive the Biafran people. The blood of the innocent Biafrans would be on your head. Verify your information before you pass it out to the Biafran people. And the false media out there that align. Against the acting Minister, Prime Minister. Against the honorable members of the Brigay. Those innocent Biafrans that you have misled. Those Biafrans that you have give heart attack. Those Biafrans that have died because of the false information. Their blood will be upon your head. For you to escape the rot. Of the Biafran people. You must come out. Either you confess to the Biafran people, ask for apology. And as well. To have make mistake, make a U-turn. Do the right thing, we will welcome you back. We don't kill our own. Every Biafran is an IPOB. We will welcome you back with joy. Knowing that you have realized your mistake. Knowing that you are back. So we can all fight together. But you must genuinely repent. Thank you. Fellow Biafrans worldwide and a special thank you. To Biafrans in the United States of America. For your impact that you have played in our struggle. We'll keep fighting, keep fighting, at the end. Victorious will be us. Victorious will be ours. Please, honorable of information. I don't know if my time is up, kindly let me know because I ask you to be the time keeper.
The time don't finish you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you, Biafrans, in the world.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, our dear and beloved honorable APN.
Thank you.
There were APN.
Thank you for that wonderful speech, our dear APN. We appreciate, and God bless you.
Life is a process. No matter how you go about it. Masi oketu kunkere, omale changoke. The Biafran Republic of Mentinexa Finance Minister. Is hungry complaining for global Biafran financial support. For the purpose of Finland Convention. Biafran Defense Forces, a ridiculous and ridiculous activity. I appreciate all Biafrans who are supporting our division movement. I also urge everyone to massive the support more than ever.
Yeah, I'm not a student.
In this critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafran. Let's come together and support our Prime Minister who is currently working tirelessly to deliver our freedom to us this year twenty twenty-four. Abonier, abonier, kengya kazanu. Freedom is coming, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Masi oketu kunkere. Salute every Biafran specially. Yeah, yeah. Oketu yo, oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ina yano, no, 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 no. Oketu buka ma. Oyamana kiti kiti bafunu womo. Oketu buka ma. Wela kiti chukuka sebele. Oketu buka ma. Oh, oketu yo, oketu buka ma. Masi oketu kunkere neke nu nu. Oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ina yano, no, no, no. Oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ni na yana nyasi. Oketu buka ma. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Like this back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in self to create wealth. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. Are you a captain? Life is not easy. Sir. Make it take and judge you. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize great dealing of Megu Juku. I can't also forget General Philip Effion. Okama, Danosaw. Kamche teban omen underground. Umoma o, kobeuge. Anya na fwa kolo. Ergon. The fantastic government in Yomla. Tisirika. Especially recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from Taiwan. They know him continue to flourish in your different endeavors. They say. Mazin Namdikan. Oh, Amadike, wa, no, ya, no, egal. The Prime Minister. Obato Bia. Oketu kunkere, simukele kiyo. Okama. Oketu yo, oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ina yano, no, 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 no. Oketu buka ma. Oyamana kiti kiti bafunu womo. Oketu buka ma. Wela kiti chukuka sebele. Oketu buka ma. Oh, oketu yo, oketu buka ma. Mama dikonyo woli sa. Oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ina yano, no, no, no. Oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ni na yana nyasi. Oketu buka ma. Ayala, ayega kolo, layega rolemu. Uwi bole, chetaka na luba fwa. One plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know. Oyemuru tiyo fa. No, 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 no. Just, just, just. Don't give up. One day, it's so close, it's so close. Oketu buka ma. Never you give up, no, no. Oketu buka ma. Believe in your dreams, brother. Oketu buka ma. Never you say no, no. Oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ina yano, no, no. Oketu buka ma. Never you doubt your faith, no, no. Oketu buka ma. Oketu buka ma. Keep your faith up, keep on fighting. Oketu buka ma. Ayala, ayala, oyama na yana, no. Oketu buka ma. A big shout out to Mazi Oketu Kunkere. I salute you, my dear, Mazi Simonibah. Life is sweet when you're precious. The greatest shout out goes for the media team with talent. Nde won.
Alright, over to you, reps.
Thank you so much, our Honorable Information Minister. And to APM, once again, we say thank you. So I want to use this opportunity to call on our sister for Texas Les and Secret Treasure Presentation by Ezeyada Stella Udembah. But before she comes up, I want to acknowledge our honorable Ministers in the House, Professor Chuma. We want to acknowledge our medias, our brothers and sisters, our doctor, Adazion. We want to acknowledge Honorable Betty, Honorable Obi, the European Rep, and other, our CRC Chairman, Honorable Emma, Madabun, and all the rest of them that are here, our Honorable 555 Vision, Honorable Pastor Vam Vam Vam. I mean, there's a lot of you guys there, but I say thank you for being here. Thank you for your time. And to our de facto Ministers back home, we say thank you for being here with us too. God bless you. Please, Biafrans, or friends of Biafrans that are here, if you have any questions for APM, please kindly raise up your hand. Meanwhile, we're gonna call our Ezeyada Stella Asuko to please come up and do the presentation on behalf of Texas. Thank you so much.
Okay, Stella, you can start your camera. And while you fix your camera, Honorable Love, your hand has been up before now.
Yes, please. Yeah, yeah, Nde won, no money.
Nde won.
I have a little update. Hundred Ejeema from Izemwa. Hundred Ejeema from Bridget.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Honorable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will make sure your hand is also up.
Yes, yes, I have a quick update as well from Texas. I have Ezeyada Helen Anujulo, fifty-nine Ejeema for Kola. And Ezeyada Josephi Wachiku, seventy for APM visit, and thirty for Kola. And then, Mwafa da, a hundred Ejeema for APM visit. So bringing Texas to two thousand one hundred and twenty-four Ejeema.
Wow, thank you, thank you.
Wow, thank you, Texas.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Honorable Noye, do your quick update before we hand over to Honorable Stella.
Yes, so a quick update from Maryland and is for Angela DK, hundred Ejeema, making it five hundred from Maryland.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Texas. Thank you, Maryland.
You're welcome.
Over to you.
I thank you, Biafrans. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for honoring our invitation, USA and Texas, we are hosting APM. We just want to thank you. And please pardon me, I'm just gonna bring a little bit humor to what we're doing. Yes, and I will call you Ogay. 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 You're welcome.
I didn't say I only be listening. I didn't say I only be listening to that voice.
You're welcome. We love you. We love you. We love you. Texas again. Mazi, thank you for this great opportunity for me to present this wonderful gift to you as I did when APM also visited. Thank you for that opportunity. And I also want to thank our great media team. You are awesome. You are awesome. Oh my goodness, Vam Vam Vam, you are too much. Ajale. Ajale.
Oyama nebu ya.
Ajale. You are too much.
Are you guys hearing?
My lovely Abadawa, you are too much.
Unbeatable.
Oh my goodness. I was the five-five-five. Honestly, I love you guys. I love you guys.
No, you were muted. No, you were muted.
I mean, I know I can't mention everybody. I, um, excuse me.
Stella. No, no, so, eh, kokola kadandu chowotage, ena, ena na azokode aso. Oké, bukanké, ena azole aso. Owotage, obakwage sanya.
Ogay. I don't think Ogay will allow her to do that. I don't think Ogay.
Would you oké, tiplé? Would you oké, tiplé?
It's okay, it's okay, it's okay. There's no problem. But again, I have this special gift for APM. Am I admitting? Do I show it or just? It's actually, it's in this.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and show it, yeah. Yeah.
Can this give back? It's a very special wine, one of the things Texas is known for.
Hmm, check it out. Yeah.
APM, we just want to thank you for all the great work you're doing and for doing what APM wants you to do. Honestly, I like humor. I like us to actually to be happy. Because if what is going on now doesn't happen, um, we can be handed over a land flow with milk and honey in a platter of gold. That's why it says "Freedom is not free." God has to expose all of whatever that is happening. Biafran land is a great land. There is nothing that you cannot get in that land. There is nothing. Yes, most of us has been, we are outside the country, we don't want to know the other. And very soon, there are so many brains outside the country that when we go back, people will be going, wow. And also, I want to use this opportunity to encourage those that are on defense. I really don't know what it means to be on defense. Even the Bible says, it's either you are hot or you are cold. And if you look warm, I think those on defense are look warm. Okatu will just spew you out. You know, so please, you know the right thing. We are, we are not under a different government. This is what APM established, and that's what we are following. Right. So there are so many people that, you know, when you listen to them, you can't even argue with them because they are just there to destroy. And I just want to say, um, um, one more thing, very important thing, um. Our journalist. Journalist. Do you know our journalist? The one that is the journalist. The journalist. You know, we need to be very thankful because she has to, the, the, the land, God has to use her to expose a lot of it. What she's doing, she's just confessing, which is good. She's, she hasn't started to apologize. There's a difference between confession and apology. She doesn't want to apologize, but she's confessing. So let's, let's, let's allow her to keep confessing. And if she wants to enter into that promised land, she must have to confess. That is just what it is. So, my dear brothers and sisters of great Biafran land, our supporters, we just, the reason why we're here is to ask you all to support us. Those that are putting your money where we're not Biafran. You can't, I mean, you're just putting away money. You have to sow your seed on a fertile ground. And that's just what it is. Don't um, use your hand to destroy yourself. So when you want to contribute, you know where you're supposed to go. Um, Biafran Government, uh, Gov, I don't have it all, you know, I don't know it well, but that is where you need to go and donate. Thank you all very much. Uh, I've already announced the amount I'm using to present this, um, special wine to our APM. Thank you all very much. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
Love you guys.
Thank you so much, our our humorous, wonderful Ezeyada, beautiful Ezeyada Stella. Thank you for your great presentation. So at this point...
Can I, can I see the, the wine? Uh, I believe we're all connecting now, right? Can I, can I see?
Let me open it before everybody's got to see it. That gets you way go. So, you look at, look at that, look at that. So, we did it.
Alright.
It's funny to send this beautiful wine to our honorable APM. So, everybody here, raise your hand. Bless, the, the wine needs to be transported.
Yes, please, any kind of support, please.
You can transport it through air, through mail, through...
Ogay, remember? Please. If you are, if you all want to join to support me in appreciating our Ogay, please, please.
You know, calling Ogay Ogay like that have caused trouble before, so you have to, you have to be careful.
Oh my God. I just want us to laugh. That's true. That's beautiful. So please, let's support our beautiful honorable Stella to send this wine to our great APM. Welcome, my dear mono, Ogay. Let's please, um, okay, hand is up. We have our honorable IC author. Please, you are welcome.
I will. Have you done, ladies? Chi.
Uh, uh, can they hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Honorable.
You will, I say, we're gonna need to play that voice. So that some people that don't know how to mimic the voice can mimic it well. Oh my goodness.
Good evening, everybody.
Yes, Honorable Ice, over to you, sir.
Yeah, good evening. Um, on behalf of Aludo, I would say, um, let's, um, uh, Stella, our dear APM, I should go ahead and take the drink that we have solidly behind him that the, the drink is, um, is okay for him to consume. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Make them not put your hand in your pockets. Muageji, thirty Ejeema, when supporter, he Bugara our Odogu APM, Maya. Igeji airplane, we Bugara here. For those who don't understand, please have donated thirty Ejeema to be able to fly this, this wa, uh, aparacia to our Odogu APM.
Nde won, thank you.
Let's raise our hands, please. Okay, we have our brother, Namat. Your hand is up, please take the floor. Can you unmute?
Yes, I've been unmuted. Good evening, everybody, my great APM. I'd imagine ten thousand each. Masikewo de Bugara ke Maya na baghe. Nde won.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mazi, um, um, another hand up is En. Thank you.
Okay, I will make a payment of thirty Ejeema and I will send the receipt to Mazi Bonifess.
Okay. Thirty Ejeema, thank you so much, our guest. Thank you. Our honorable Emily K, your hand is up.
Yes, yes.
Take the floor.
I, um, now, Vavam Vavam, we need you to be able to find, are you still there? We need you to be able to find a recording where she was, you know, where this, uh, uh, Adan, Adan Do. I'm gonna go, rep. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That recording will come out with a, a fine on it. So, we need to travel, we need to travel to somewhere to go and get that recorded. Oh.
It's not the first money too.
Okay, yeah, okay, well, I will do fifty to support the, the, the wine and fifty to travel there and get that recorded.
In the world.
Nde won.
Thank you, Honorable.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. And we have our, um, Cheezy. Your hand is up, please take up the floor. Thank you.
Good evening, telephone factory. Good evening, fellow Biafrans. Um, my honour, APM, hope you are not the one that called Ogay. Hope you are not the one that called Ogay.
We wasn't turned on. We wasn't turned on.
I don't want, I'm letting it be you.
You can find out with money now, Ejeema.
Danname is, danname is always a student. Uh, USA, you know, good morning. Uh, thank you for hosting our airport acting Prime Minister. The man who walks both on the ground and off land.
Yes.
I don't know what cannot quantify his accent and his, uh, potential he's been. So, you're welcome to the United States of America, North and South. And, um, all Briggy Media Teams and everyone present here. I'm counting the cents on the Twitter X now. Based on the defense so that are returning back. And if you go to Mazi, Aparawa stage, I think we are having a high number of viewers in that very place. So, it is a good one. And I pray, there's people returning. As you are returning, don't just be cold or look warm. Please join the chorus. Start doing what you need to do, we need to defend our lands in, uh, both in diplomacy and whatever uh, that they require, that we should restore this land, going to make a honey. It's not easy for a bookie and an Amajiri that has nothing in their lands that in, by the drastism they will, they are cut to the south to feed on the greens, green grass that is still affecting the south. So it is not easy for them to pitch the land without application of the minimum force. So, uh, on this note, uh, I don't know where the name Ogay is coming from. So, uh, on this note, uh, I don't know where the name Oge is coming from. But the, the people of United States of America, uh, we also getting to welcome our PM with a sum of ten thousand a gemma. I mean, uh, ten a gemma, sorry.
That will become. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
God bless our APM. God bless Brigi. God bless our, uh, Prime Minister and our Head of State. Mazinambe Kama. Nigeria is under heavy pressure because of the peace of our APM. And keep supporting him, please and please keep supporting him. He's been a nice job. Thank you and God bless you and God bless you.
Thank you so much, our brother. There were. I, I'm looking at our mommy and then they write in my face. I, I'm not gonna continue without, um, acknowledging her presence. I said mommy, and then, then no, God bless you, Mama. You always been here for us and with us. You have something to say?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Mama. You are muted.
I'm muted.
Mute yourself again, ma.
Hello, hello. Are you people hearing me?
Yes.
Yes. I am so happy to see each and every one. All protocol observed. Our people say the webi ke, unity is strength. Unity is strength. When I watch each and every one of you, the faces and the, the way you people are pursuing it, it gives me strength. And I, we, the older ones that are here, we pray night and day for strength and for God's favor upon our APM and upon everyone that is fighting this battle seriously. God sees each and every one of us. He sees our hearts, all those Nsama. It is not by accident that they are confessing. God will put more confession in their mouth that we will know their roots and their plants even beforehand. Even though our PM said that we are thousand time miles ahead of, of, of them. And this is true. Wherever our Onyendu is and wherever our PM is, God is completely with them. And our prayer, the Bible says in the spirit, there is no distance. As we are doing what we are doing, we will continue to put them in prayer. And in no sooner time, God will, there's a purpose why we are there. If they were in there, we would think that all of us have one mind. We wouldn't know, even as my sister Nena was fighting, trying to prove which was, everybody could see the truth. But for whatever Fulani Juju they did, there's our PM with the strength God has given him. That is why we are where we are today, because even though that God has put our PM to put her out of all the important places that she will have been able to, to stand, to swear what we are doing, her signatures are not in any of this. So millionaire corner so now. And that, on that note, uh, we are giving, me and my brother, we are giving already a gemma to support our, our APM visit to, to US. And we are in, uh, we are here in Houston. So Houston family, she, you know now, you have my, my brother is saying that you changed your number. I don't know. So you will still give us your new number, all right?
Okay, sure.
Okay, today we are giving already a gemma to support a visit. God bless each and every one of you. Sunny, I love you. Bam bam bam. Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work. God bless each and everyone and encourage and strengthen you in no time. Your name will be written in the book of Biafra. Thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless you too. Thank you, Mama.
Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
There, woman.
There you are.
Um, we are going to call our honorable, okay, Chuku Owol, to please pick up the mic. Honorable, okay.
And there were, good evening, there were APM.
Good evening, sir.
And there, there were U S A. I own no Ika.
You say?
I know just like, uh, when I see, uh, our APM, the guy they put enough gravel for him. I've been a, I've been a, any hour, any hour in, in what I'm missing that. I very good. And we appreciate, we appreciate you all. And I not get much to say. I just, I don't stay here. I come here, one of our sisters say, maybe add a small, a little humor to what you do. I say, yes, it is needed. So I want, I don't, they, 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 they are say, I go, they here. And they bring cola, I know it. They bring, uh, this wine again. I don't know. Uh, even though I don't know how the thing tastes, I don't go, uh, drink. You get, uh, one village in those days where we, they here, very, very bad. Where they not do the so forth, Sastya, if you know what I mean. And they are very, very notorious. They are unknown. So they come get a ceremony, one festival sometime. Take now, uh, marriage a festival. So one man come go there, in law, they serve a cola. You know, one, you know, great take. They serve, uh, drink, you know, great drink. They bring food, you know, great eat, because they don't hear say this village. Uh, maybe they know they play with them or they, they give anyhow. So one man did here, uh, they observe, come look, he say this man never agree, taking anything. The man walk go reach and say, I don't they monitor you. Since where you they here, they bring cola, you know, great take. They serve wine, you know, one thing. They come bring food again, you know, one eat. So I don't know what you hear about our village. If you're not about in where you don't hear about us, make I tell you. I alone, where I look you, not poison. So if you see him, because they, in they don't say, make you not eat anything because of what he in there, they say. Ordinarily, I wearing don't look at, say, that's alone, he said, you know, danger. So I just, uh, thought of videos anyway. So I know they here, I call I come, I know it is. So I want say, I beg you, uh, cola, uh, don't pass me. That's a drink. I don't know if not, right, right, yeah, this. Now just one shot where I, I want, one shot of it. Anytime, anyhow, when I take a, open a, that is shot. Now, now that's what I tell growth. That's, uh, where they put from mouth to go. You know, sweet space. Uh, so, um, twenty a gemma for a shot of, uh, uh, a shot of that one, a support of a USA. Uh, one that's it. I'll send you the, the receipt. Uh, okay. No worries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, honorable Ken. We appreciate. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mazie. Okay, honorable Ken Deo.
There were. So we're calling back on our honorable Isaac Otta. Your hand is still up. Please pick up the mic.
Uh, uh, sorry, it's like I didn't mention the amount I'm donating.
Yeah.
I, oh, okay.
We can't hear you, sir.
I am done it to support the APM one AJ, to support it in DPM for the wine provided for him. And then extra five thousand AJ for his visit to the USA. Thank you.
That means ten thousand AJ, right?
Ten plus five, fifteen.
Oh, fifteen. Okay. Thank you so much, um, honorable Isaac. Thank you, thank you. God bless you. We need more hands up. You know, at least you can give up, uh, you know, uh, make a be for the beautiful joke that our sister craft. It's still part of it. If you like that joke, you know, it's gonna cost you something to laugh, right? So we need you to do something about that wonderful joke. And you see the beautiful wine, this is essential. And you wanna taste it, you, you wanna dream about the, the wine, you are more than welcome. But it's gonna cost you something. Come on. We need those hands up. Show us those beautiful hands. Akaneu, Akaneu, it's going, you know, Akaneu. Let's go, our beautiful people. Beautiful people of Biafra. Come on, we know they carry last. Let's go, let's go. You either bid for the joke or for the wine. I've not seen our honorable Nena here. Honorable Nena, are you here? I also welcome our mama, Mr. Chiniere Amunek. You wanna say something? He's from Texas. So all our Texas mamas and papas, you are more than welcome. It is our day. And our honorable Udo, the Alex Chuku, our brother, he is here. He is an artist. He's a Biafran artist. Um, one of these days, he is going to play his, um, one of his albums for us. He's doing so great. So honorable Udo, you are more than welcome to say hello to our people.
I think Nonya's hand is up.
Okay. Honorable Nonya, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
It's okay.
Welcome.
Yeah, yes, thank you. So, um, Sister Stella, I'm going to donate thirty dollars just to make sure that he send the, that wine to APM, Mazy Ogenkere. FedEx.
FedEx. Thank you so much, our dear sister.
You're welcome. Who do I send the receipt to?
Send it to me.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, our honorable love is here. Your hand is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You know, I have issue with Texas.
Hmm, yes, ma'am.
Um, Texas, they go cowboy. I'm a mahalaba boss. I don't know what they do, but I do know one thing. Texas make promise that they don't keep.
Oh my God.
Yes, ma'am. It's you guilty as stated. So being the Brigi police, I need to be sure that wine finds its way to Maryland. So Unucharoon Yen Do, Gi Dunu Ga. Unukume Wangua Doganaga.
Yes.
Okay. And Meji, twenty a gemma. Ga, two thousand Yen Jiya Womai. Where is thirty a gemma, gan nonono law APM to make sure I am my Biaruru on tampered. Okay, because Ayagage Lanya Mazendamdekanu, we're still looking for him. APM, we're still looking for him. So. Uh, he's not here now. I know where he is. What I'm saying is, I don't want that wine to be tampered on the way.
Yes.
Comprended?
Supported.
So that's why, in the age of thirty a gemma, gan nonono K A P M to make sure that wine is not tampered upon delivery.
Has anyone been tampered before? Sorry.
I don't want to start it. He may not walk cut to my car, wow, our, our Brigi cut to my police. Ma'am, and there's the target receipt, fifty a gemma.
Thank you.
Two, one Kenji, I mean, Scott, the carry up that wine and thirty one Kenji, make sure that it's not tampered.
Absolutely. Emailer. Thank you so much. Appreciate. We move, we move. And let me use this opportunity to let you guys know that some people wish they could dissolve Brigi. But Brigi is what? Indissoluble.
Undissoluble.
We cannot dissolve. Brigi cannot be dissolved. We are following our Biafran templates, right? So those people who refuse to follow our PM's, uh, principles and templates cannot be the ones to dictate for us. Our PM's principles are in the Biafran shelter. So we are following Biafran shelter. Biafrans do not get deceived when an evil person tells you that she deserved Biafran. She, she deserved Brigi. No, we are the ones that deserved her, right? She does not have no power. She even went ahead and said that the, our lobbies are, are being fired or whatever. That is not true. Please disregard the lies. That's a wishful thought and that's a lie. There's actually an update from our own, um, our own General Ross. He gave an update and I plead that everyone go and follow him on Twitter and read it up what he said. You know, it's like the Borumiri woman don't sell their group to Nigeria, the zoo. So with that being said, we're not gonna be distracted, just a little nuggets. Yeah. So we go back to our fundraising. Um, I can spot our honorable C O S, Amobi. I can spot our sister, honorable Yunis. And please, we need more hands up. All right. So Mommy Chinira Amunek, if you wanna speak, please, uh, raise your hand. Also, our brother, um, Alex Chuku. There were no. We have our mommy Helen Anujulu. These are from Texas, our Texas family. Anybody that wants to speak, please raise your hand.
Mighty Dog is up. Mighty Dog.
Okay, Mighty Dog. I wrote him before.
Yeah, can I speak now?
Go ahead, sir.
All right. Yeah, good afternoon. Um, greetings, everybody.
There were.
Yeah, greetings, Sister Chinia. Uh, greetings, our APM.
Our brother.
I'm Anzul Kenkere. People will make more. Um, greetings to everybody here, all the cabinet members, the North American, North and South American Red. Yeah, greetings, Biafrans. Yeah, sorry, I'm just greeting our the gym. Um, yeah, we need to support today with fifty a gemma for the Cola Nuts and hundred for the visit, making two hundred and fifty a gemma. Thank you.
Thank you so much, honorable Mighty Dog.
Thank you.
From South Carolina. He's a South Carolina admin. Thank you. God bless you. More hand, please. So, um, while we waiting for hands up, we can take some more, um, music dedications. And if you have questions for our APM, you are more than welcome to raise your hands and answer questions.
Mazie Kilo's hand.
Huh?
Mazie Kilo.
Okay, our honorable Kilo, please grab the mic. Thank you.
Honorable Sister, I was wondering if you are ignoring me, but.
Oh, no, because your hand is so special. I couldn't see that come.
I was wondering, but that, that's okay. So, um, pulling up on our sister that says, uh, she, she will take sentry at APM's house. And then something occurred to me. I said, wait a minute. When that wine arrives, I'm gonna donate a hundred a gemma, so that we take it to FBI. And FBI, we inspect it, test it and make sure. So that we take it to F B I and F B I we inspect it, test it and make sure it's okay. Okay, so, so it's not, we don't want it to be like the perfume that was going to the Latin. Okay, so that's what I've, so a hundred eje ma, I'm gonna send the receipt in before the wine arrives.
Yes, thank you so much, our dear honorable fellow. Thank you so much and God bless you, we pray for more Akanshawa to all our donors. We are fighting for our liberation, so God bless you all. You know, this is the time. Iguazota nine, please support, Kizota nine. We don't want Islamization. Let's go ahead and raise more hands. And if you have questions for A P M, he's waiting for your questions. Any misconception whatsoever, he's waiting to correct it. Uh, we, I also have support our honorable Professor Joy Irobi. We say welcome ma'am. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Our honorables in the house, we appreciate you guys, we say welcome. We need more hands up. Sunny, can you take over, our honorable Sunny? Music?
Uh, uh, Honorable Chiniere, Honorable Chiniere, where are we?
We are doing the fundraising at the same time, special music dedication.
Okay. I I I I think I'll give you people the special number, let me give you people the special number now.
Yes, please, thank you.
Uh, can I announce a contribution from California?
Yes, please, go ahead.
On behalf of Mazy Mark, uh Genesis. Uh, California has donated a total of two hundred and ten eje ma.
Thank you so much, California.
Thank you.
California, yeah? California is coming up, thank you. California, yeah, thank you. So after the music, it's gonna be a closing remark by our A P M and acknowledgement of donors. So after the music, our A P M will be getting ready to give his closing remark and his acknowledgements. We are doing it sharp sharp, cause we know tomorrow is Monday, thank you. More hands. There's a hand up.
Yeah.
Ohio, honorable, uh, our sister, Chama. Honorable Amaka, please go ahead. Hello?
Yeah, Ohio, go ahead.
Ah, hello.
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 There were.
That was not a war.
No.
No.
Ndini nde sorro, A P M bo tafofo. Emesya hage sorro, A P M bu reze.
Okay.
Ndini ne sorro, igwe gidi ban, gidi ban, tafofo. Emesya hage sorro, igwe bu reze. Ndini ne sorro, three wise men tafofo. Emesya hage sorro, three wise men bu reze.
Yeah.
Yes. Iga, uh 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 game.
Of course.
In this, in the streets of Biafra. Our leader said it that we will, in fact, that day, at the fullness of time, we will dance in the streets of Biafra. A lot of uh merriment, drama. Monday night, I am never. You know what? Konaka, konaka. We are not money, no, we are happy people, we are, we are victorious. They shared that money without telling her, that is the problem.
Right.
Yes. Fifteen thousand million, they shared it without telling her. And he had her own share, that's why she came out. I want to pass uh a message to our cabinet. You see that money? That woman, he said, she said that um she used fifty thousand for um the other one and the hundred, uh, how many, eighty mi- uh fifty million and eighty million. Is a tighties she wants to use. So that we will be saying that, oh, our money has finished, that money is somewhere cooling off. In, even if it's in one thousand years coming, on any foreigno to get Biafra should look for that money. She cannot eat that money like that and go free. It never been, my money is there. I know how much I suffered to put my money in the dimension account. In her name, she is using our brain. And she forgot that some people like our uh information minister. So now, my God. She forget that she, he is there, he cannot play him, why you? He cannot, she cannot play Professor Choma and her husband. She cannot play all these men that has brain. She cannot. Those men, she will give us our money, it's a matter of time.
Oh yeah.
So. Ah, A P M, what come made a gemba? Um. She made sure that wine got to him with thirty dollars, thirty eje ma.
Eje ma.
Biko.
Wow.
And all this while, you guys didn't see me, I'm busy in the kitchen, making a soup. I'm from Encana, Enugu State. Never made, never see a word, our. Share our Joko Joko. With simple as one each. Oh my god. And then, eh Jimu, fifty eje ma we made that soup.
Wow.
Very, it's very, very delicious. I heard uh one uh voice, uh, our, our A P M, our P M, uh, P A. The voice, I, whenever I hear, I heard the voice of A P M, uh, P M, uh, uh, personal assistant. I love that voice too much. I have never forgotten his song. Basozi Biafra nu. Basozi Biafra Nandida. Basozi Biafra, no one, he left, so. So, I'm giving ten eje ma for that voice I heard today and yesterday. Our success, you see, we are seeing your hand work. It doesn't matter how much they they hate you, I don't care. Honorable success. Honorable success.
Let me, let me, let me help you with the song. Basozi Biafra nu.
Yes.
Basozi Biafra Nandida. Basozi Biafra nu, guna Nandida.
And the name, where he, where, where, thank you so much. Oh yes. Amen. For reminding me that vo- that song, Tenager. Woo. Tenager for reminding it. And our P, our infinite, um, me, uh, honorable Sunny and your deputy. Oh my god, oh my god, oh my god.
Thunder.
Like thunder, van van van, in our fire. Keep vying them. Emacher. And let me tell this you, uh, dog, that I used to go back to eat what she vomited. He on our bamboo is now to raise another account. Because you, you are not belonging to um P A P M, you do not belong to, where do you belong? Where do you want your group to be paying? You, you want to go and, you, you want to go and get another account. You are a wood dog. You eat, you ate what you vomited. Today you say one thing, tomorrow you go back, tomorrow, I nature again. So. Today. I don't know what to say, I'm just happy. I'm just happy. So, conclusion of my word is, you see me, we will get there. They are high you. Perfume have a cani, kajiha. Oh, did that ja, they will come back, I don't care, I'm going forward. Biafra or, Biafra or nothing. Thank you, my people, keep doing the good work. God is by our side, we are getting there, it can only get things better. Bye bye.
He say, he say.
Thank you. Ah, my spotted our, our own Azia that Joseph Wachuku. Our Azia that Chiniere Amunike, please. If you have something to say, you can unmute, raise your hand and greet our people. Today is our day. We are not morning, we are happy people, we are victorious people. Please pick up the mic and greet our A P M, the way you want to, it's our day. Our brother Udogu Alex Chuku.
He's trying, looking for, just like me.
Okay, okay, um, I'm asking you to unmute. Okay. Can you unmute? Did you see? Unmute. Our honorable Sunny, please, could you help our mommy here to unmute? Chiniere?
Yeah, she's doing it. Think she can just, yeah, you're okay now.
You're good, okay.
Okay, I've unmuted, I've been trying to, I didn't know what, where, where to press.
Go ahead, I can hear you now.
Okay, well, you know that I'm not one of many words. Staying here looking at everybody's face and hearing your voices, I'm very happy with that. And since I have to speak, I will speak. Good evening, my A P M, Chiniere Amunike is speaking from his.
Your evening ma.
There were. There were none. Chiniki abalo game. So. All I made them a full makana ngana, and I helped them to reach him.
That natural Biafra.
Um, to support the one from Houston to Maryland. I got many thirty dollars, thirty eje ma.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, our mommy. Greet our children for us.
Okay.
There were, okay, our, our Azia dad just like you want to.
Thank you.
Please greet our A P M in a special way. Hi. Our sister, are you there?
Yes, today.
Okay, um.
Where is that noise coming?
I'm not sure she's close to our mic. Okay, um, however. Thank you so much to our great donors, we appreciate you. We're going to hand over the mic to our Odogo A P M.
Make them hear, make them hear the special number first before.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah. Our C E O S, you can speak if you want to. Honorable Neoma, um. While we waiting for the music, honorable Neoma, please go ahead and speak. Can you hear me?
Just a moment. Yeah. Hello, am I coming out?
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, thank you all. Thank you. Uh, sorry, I came late, but I was following. Yeah, I wanted to greet everyone, I appreciate your great works. So God bless you. Adachiniere.
Yes, our sister.
There were, there were.
Bless you.
Yeah, hey, everybody, everybody, I greet you all. Yeah, I just send the receipt of the donation I made for eh Aziane. My home, uh, my hometown. Yeah, yeah, I send the receipt uh to website and uh uh, I am supporting this beautiful wine to our A P M and his wonderful speech eh with forty eh eje ma. Yeah, forty dollars, so, God bless you all, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Prayer, our prayer is working very fast. Even if you, even if all of you are not seeing me, we are battling. Yeah, our prayer is yielding fruit because, oh, a lot, a lot, a lot is coming out. So, we keep on moving, keep on mov- uh moving, praying for our P M. Praying for our, you know, onyenduma zinamdekalu. Our acting prime minister, please, you know now, did they kill you? Oh, yeah, senior, did they kill you? Oh, yeah, senior, did they kill you? Oh, we had the morning. So, I go and okay, never you, you know. Uh, uh, we know whom we are following, we know from the beginning that you are on the right side. Myself, when my spirit tell me go ahead, I don't look back because I know what I'm doing is the right thing. Honorable Menike, I see you. Thank you, thank you all, thank you all, thank you, I've been so busy. But it's for just cause, but I'm with you all, yeah. Van van van. Esuwa ma kuwa kuwa, but any more idea, hey, hey, hey. Van van van, alama kuwa, alama kuwa, come go go, but you don't know, yeah. Sunny. I will not tell you. It's me and Chukokika Bava, you will not know, you don't say everything. Yeah. Eh, Simon, uh, honorable Barawa, nah, you see, okay. You see, can work on my, you see, all of you, Adazion. Eh, eh, what I, I'll be, you see me, eh, Choma, is in there. Yes. Everyone, please, eh, you people know that I'm not very fast in mentioning people's name, but I have you all at heart. Yeah. I'm praying for all of us and we keep on moving, I don't want to waste your time because eh the meeting is concluding, but I've been, I've been with you from the beginning. Yeah, only today I'm, I have a pause from my work, so I have the opportunity, this donation, I will send it right away. Because I said, let me enter the Zoom before you conclude, before I send this forty dollars, yeah. So, God bless you all, we keep on moving. You go, Kikabia, man knows that our, our sacrifice was so. Knows that our eh our sacrifice was so and was so great. Even myself to be in Finland, you people, if I, I know what I sacrificed to be in Finland. And many of us, it cannot be taken for granted. All our effort cannot be taken for granted and we did not sacrifice it for one person. We sacrificed it for Biafra freedom, for our generation, for unborn children. So to hell whoever that want to put all our sacrifice. Or 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 to does been, to hell all of, all uh uh, a- anyone that don't value the sacrifice of innocent. Innocent Biafra. We are not joking. We need our freedom. We need our freedom and we must be free. So God bless you all. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna take more hands. Thank you, Sister Neoma. Our brother Udogu Alex from Texas. And we want to acknowledge our C O S. Um honorable Mobi from Texas too. So come on Texans. Go ahead, our brother. Udogu.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. Our, our A P M, I thank you for your work, for what you have been doing so far. So, um if you guys didn't hear my voice like that every time, doesn't mean that I'm not with you guys, I'm with you guys.
Yes.
So. Because the first time we, we uh this Ingazi brought this is our confession. Our A P M swear for us. Say that he's following the right path and since that time I believe him. So. Anywhere, Holy Ghost, Commander Holy Ghost, Bustoza, and our men on ground is is where I am too, you understand, so. I believe in you, bro, and um I wanna use fifty. Dollar to support the one plus the one I gave before, so.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Thank you. Okay.
If it's not bridging, it's not Biafra.
Exactly.
Maybe we listen to the special number.
Yes.
Cause time don't go.
Okay. Nah, thank you very much. Okay. Nah, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Okay. In the future, my name meaning. I don't know. Okay. Okay, Choko. Okay, Chi. How do you know? I try to cover myself. I don't want to show anything. Okay, may God bless you.
You say?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Wait, now let's collect our gemma first though. We're gonna play later, please, our sister, our sister, uh Stella. And so and after Stella is gonna be Okada Helen.
Now they interrupt my special number, I go pay fine for this.
Now you didn't teach me to collect money first now, so make I collect money. I'm learning from you. Alright, our honorable Sister Stella, please, you have the mic.
Oh my god. Oh Jesus. Oh my goodness, this is so funny. You know, because of this special number, this is a special number. I'm gonna add. Another fifty dollars.
Thank you so much.
Add another fifty. But please, I just want to. Want to play with us. Um our A P M. The cabinet, the honorables. Beconu. And. When you'll go to your meeting and when A P M comes out. In my this eh USB. Phone charger. I think any did you change that name? We can't be, we can't, we cannot get into that. Because they have dragged the the USB to the mall.
We are not using the phone charger, that is why the rabbinists are saying. We are not using the phone charger, we know we have.
Connected with USB. You know, thank you also very much, thanks a lot.
You so much, we appreciate you, Azia. Alright, the next quickly is gonna be our Okada Helen Anujulu. And I have just spotted our academic highness. So, um Okada Helen, please go ahead.
Helen, on mute yourself, please.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please, we can.
You need camera?
It's okay, don't matter.
Okay.
Um, I just want to use this opportunity to thank our. A P M. All the honorable ministers in the house. For all that you're doing. And I want to um. Donate extra, I have already made my donation, but I want to make extra one today. On behalf of. Our, the lion of the tribe of the Judah. Mazinande Kano. Was still standing for us. The last court, what he did there really showed us that. He's not giving up. And if he's not giving up. We that are out here. At least we we have some kind of freedom, even though we are looking for freedom. We have some kind of freedom out here, but look at him. In that dungeon. Each time he come out. He still shows that he is not giving up. I really, really appreciate him for that. Standing strong for what he believe. And again, I want to, you know, appreciate. Our Prime Minister. For taking us to where we are today. He made it possible. Our nation has been real declared and there is no going back. Again, I want to thank our A P M. For making it possible. In United States, you know, uh government. He has taken us to the White House. So for that reason. I am making extra hundred dollars for all these people. And I thank every Biafra that is still strong, I mean, standing strong. We will get to finish line.
Thank you, thank you so much. Our dear Okada Helen, thank you, you always supporting, thank you for your consistency, God bless you. Thank you.
Bless you all too.
Okay.
All in need together.
Uh huh, yes, man. They were. Um. Our honorable academic highness. Honorable Unis, um honorable C O S, Amobi. Please pick up the mic. Okay. Alright, our honorable information minister, please go ahead while we're waiting for them to um. Raise their hand. Thank you.
Okay, now let me give another special number. Cause I have many, many special numbers to give and they come very special. Let me give another one, this one now.
Yeah, well, thank you, sir. Almost three hundred euros for more. Eh, that's all the caffeine, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, 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 I thank you, I thank you, I thank you. Hey. Thank you. Thank you, I thank you again. Thank you towards the evening that boy, the night. Thank you so much, thank you. Hey, thank you. Good evening, sir. MMS, but I'm gonna appreciate, thank you so much. Thank you so much, thank you.
Good morning from here. Okay.
This one is always romantic.
Okay, good morning from here. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Uh uh, how many times?
Wow. Thank you so much. Thank you, our professor.
Can see where the hatred is coming from? Could you just see where the hatred is coming from?
We, we can see definitely, yeah.
Okay, and hatred.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, but guess what, um they can't eat their cakes and.
Unless he's still playing.
Is he playing? Okay. Sorry.
I know, I know, I go pay fine for this, my special number. This, this, this special number is coming in a psychedelic manner.
Okay, go ahead.
I think eh, eh Honorable Chinie, please um try to compose another song with the Honorable Stella. Okay, okay.
Well noted. Wow. That was something.
Good morning from here. Okay. 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 I'm out of my busy. I'm on a moon you. I'm on a key siege. Thank you very much. I don't know. What about me? I don't know. And in the future, I'm yours. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. I'm not gonna miss you, I don't know. Thank you very much. I will never disappoint you.
Who want to, who want to bless my special number now, can bless me?
This one is what blessing, oh. La madonnale. They are gonna disappoint A P M. For A P M. That's right. Thank you so much, our honorable. Oh my goodness, that is something. Yes, thank you, our honorable. Yes. Not to, not to. You see? I have just spotted our beautiful mommy, Doctor Comfort, no mama, welcome.
I just want to support love with thirty dollars.
Thank you, thank you, Gemma.
Put them in the high court, high court.
So much, mommy. That's true.
Yeah, go your praise.
Thank you. Neil Mayon is up.
Hello, am I coming out?
Yes, man.
Hey, I wonder love. I had the opportunity to see you face to face. Oh my god.
Thank you, thank you, my sister. Thank you so much.
My donation for today is fifty ajama, okay? I will send the uh receipt letter because I'm using the same telephone for Zoom.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Neoma.
You can do that.
Yes, so.
We miss our mommy in Namibia, maybe she's very busy, yeah. I am, but she was there yesterday.
Yeah, but I think she's not by her camera.
Alright, alright, no problem. She was yesterday, I followed her speech yesterday, wonderful. Also, but Sunny Barawa, your speech yesterday was amazing. Okay?
Thank you so much.
We must continue moving.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, um um. If anybody has any questions, any more donations, please, we are open to receive. Your donations. However, um. Our honorable information minister, um. Did you play the music yet or do we go over to the next?
I gave, I gave my music as a special number that I just gave now, so.
Okay, cool, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I appreciate that. He was so brilliant.
Let's go to A P M for closing.
Alright, so let's, let's uh move over to the next item, which is closing remark by our A P M and acknowledgement of donors. Thank you so much. Our honorable A P M, you have the mic. Nde wo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. The A P M that have been underwritten.
Yes.
The O G E T that people ask how come? What is the meaning of O G E T? O G E T means God's time and you cannot change it.
Yes, sir.
Right.
O G E T, O G E T, come on. O G E T, O G E T, come on. O G E T, O G E T, come on. O G E T, O G E T, come on.
Yes.
I just want to send a message to all the good people in this world, to all the good people in Biafra land, to the genuine ones, to those that care about their fellow human being.
Yes, sir.
This fight that I have embarked on is not my doing.
Uh huh.
I didn't even, if you ask me, how do everything started, how do I join, I can't even explain.
Yes.
Years ago, if somebody would tell me probably eight, nine, ten years ago, that I'll be doing what I'm doing now, I will say how, how come?
Uh huh.
All I know is that over twenty years ago, I hate the Zulu terrorist Nigeria country. I hate it with passion. I hate Nigeria a long time ago, before I even joined the fight of uh my people. Before I joined the fight to fight for the freedom of Biafra. Please, fellow Biafrans, if you are one of those fighting against Maziogu Kukunkiri disease from it, I did not join this fight for my own personal gain. I joined this fight for the love
Uh huh.
that I have for my creator, Chukwokike Abiam, God.
Yes.
God, God love his creation.
Yes.
I love humanity.
Absolutely.
So for that reason, how will I hate my own people of Biafra? Charity begins at home. And that is why it starts from Biafra land. I love my people Biafra. I love Biafra with passion. And I hate the Nigerian state with passion. If I have the opportunity, if I, Maziogu Kukunkiri, have the opportunity to burn that zoo down in a second, I won't think twice. I repeat what happened in Sodom and Gomorrah. I will sound the line and say, fellow Biafrans, get out. That is time to burn down the entity that have killed millions of Biafrans. It break my heart when I see our fellow Biafrans fighting against each other. We have one common enemy. Let's go after the enemy that we have. And for those inside our struggle, if you one of those having secret meetings about who you will bring down, about who is doing it right or wrong, disease from it. If you have a problem with your brother, call that brother. Talk to that brother. Resume with that fellow Biafran. Stop ganging up behind. Because joining, we are all volunteers. A lot of us have put it all. I myself, I accept this responsibility. That is why I'm not complaining, whether I sleep at night or not. This is something that I already taking the responsibility. I will not back down. And I will not back down from anyone who want to fight me, whether as the A P M, whether as the, as the finance minister, or just as a Biafran. Before I joined the struggle, I already be fighting. Before the government was formed, I already be fighting. Before I joined the advisory committee, I already be fighting. Before I became the A P M, I already be fighting. Nothing have changed. So for those of you that think being the A P M changed me, hey, no, changed nothing. Whether I'm the A P M or not, I will fight. There is nothing I'm doing now that I have never done before. I didn't join the struggle because of personal gain. I didn't join because of position. Before being the finance minister, I have done a lot. Before the government was formed, I have done a lot, and it never stopped. And I will keep doing it, whether the devil like it or not, whether our enemy within and outside like it or not. The voice note that was just played earlier of one of our sister, she publicly came out crying for Biafrans. She need help. If Biafrans will help her, she will use her platform to serve Biafra. And what changes, what changed? She said she will not disappoint. Don't be a promise and fail. For all those that have disappointed us, all those that have betrayed us, whoever have betrayed this struggle, ask yourself question. The land of Biafra will reject you. Ask yourself question. Is that what you want to be your portion? I'm somebody who like to give. From my village, I still remain your favorite son. My village where I'm from can take a bullet for me. I done a lot for them even well before I joined the struggle. A lot of people have cajoed me. It's not moving me. But I can never change who I am. I love my creator. And I'm a careful giver. And I believe by giving, doing the right thing, you will be blessed and blessed and blessed and blessed again. There is a song that goes this way. Blessed be the one that given. And if you're a Biafran, you are not giving to support your liberation. Ask yourself, do you think the land of Biafra will bless you? It's not a magic. You can't do it with voodoo or whatever a crowd, no. It's already a reward ordained by God. God said the more you give, the more you receive. God said you that given, you will be blessed. And it's not evil, happy fellow Biafrans, but sometimes the evil ones. The evil ones make the good ones to think twice if they will help or not. Our sister that I used to help before, turn around again to lie against me, to fight me with the same platform that I helped when she needed the help, when she cried out to us, when she cried out to Biafrans. Everyone that I have helped, I did not render that help because I have the resources to help. It's because that is who I am. Please, fellow Biafrans, let us learn how to help. Let us have the love of God. Let us know that God loves us. And he is not going to come from heaven to help us. He will use us to help us. He will use the same Biafrans to help Biafrans. If you believe in God and you a spiritual person, you are not happy, you don't have the love of God, you don't love your country, you don't love your nation, that means you are evil person. That means Chukwokike Abiam, it's not in you. For those of you that make me laugh over the good I have done for you all, all I can say, repent from your evil way. Turn around. Come back and correct all the wrongdoing you have done. Correct it before it's too late. Maziogu Kukunkiri, I'm pure and clean in fighting for Biafra. I'm doing everything I can by the grace of God. I am in to fight. I'm going nowhere. I've been fighting for years now with pure heart. Please, fellow Biafrans, if you have the love of God in you, kindly support what we are doing. Kindly have, kindly support our creator because he wants us to be free. Be ambassador of God. Do the best you can. Our people have been massacred every day by our enemy. This is our blood, our family members. We want a better country, we want a better nation, and we can all achieve it in Biafra land. All the evil people that have lied against us, please, for you to be forgiving, turn around. Come back and do the right thing. Let us all fight and free ourselves. Please, we are, we encourage every meaningful Biafrans. This is a new week. We have engagement in Washington. I call it diplomatic war. It's not easy. We'll be going, working with Trump admin, uh President, Trump administration to make sure we are fully recognized and U S support. Our Prime Minister used to say when U S laid the rest of the world full, which I also adopt that slogan. It's a new week, and for us to achieve everything, we need a Jema. We need finance. It's not free. Our lobbies need to be paid. Our autonomy need to be paid. Please kindly call the media team, get the, uh get in touch with them so you can be part of the lobby committee and our autonomy uh committee as well. There's nothing we can do without a Jema. So we need financial support for us to fight and totally free ourselves. Thank you all, Biafrans. We love you all. This fight that we have embarked ourselves on, we must fight to the end. From the bottom of my heart, I'm in. Fighting with everything I have. I will do everything possible that I can as human being to make sure that I did not fall astray and that will never, never, never happen. I will make sure that our enemies that thought and underrate Maziogu Kukunkiri at the end of the day, they will turn around and glorify our God because we are genuine people, we are fighting for the cause of our freedom. Thank you, U S A, and all the members of the cabinet, reps and admin that is here today. Nde wo. Thank you.
Nde wo.
Nde wo. Thank you so much, our honorable A P M. Thank you for that wonderful submission. We highly appreciate you.
Big tiger.
We continue to pray that God Almighty will guide you through as you go to Washington, D C to represent us. We ask for divine favor upon you and upon Biafra. And we ask in the name of Chukwokike Abiam, that Biafra will come at our time.
Hallelujah.
Brethren, we must continue to do the needful. Our website is always open. Though we are closing this fundraising for today, but kindly visit our website. Remember, our B D F and our liberation are our hope, right? So let's, you know, do the needful. If we don't get it now, we can't get it anymore. And we don't want our children to go through all the stress and all this nonsense that we going through, please. Alright, so without being said, I want to appreciate everybody that have donated. And I pray that those who do not have the resources to donate, that God will bless you all, that next time you will be able to donate. So thank you so much. We're calling on our Ezada Tochi for closing prayers.
We have a hand up, uh unit, we have a hand up.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Unis.
Oh, our honorable Unis, thank you, please. Um you have the mic.
Thank you. Wonderful people. Good afternoon from my end. I can't speak for long and thank you very much, everyone. No, I, I, it's okay, it's okay. I'm not in a good place to hold my camera now.
Alright, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you all so much. I know it's um the end of the program, but I just want to say thank you all very much. Ah, Maziogu Kukunkiri, our A P M, God bless you. I was moved and touched by your speech. I can't talk, but I have to talk now. I will use hundred dollars to say thank you and support our U S A family. God bless you all so much.
And then thank you so much, our honorable Unis.
Nde wo.
God bless you. Thank you for what you're doing on Twitter space too. We hear your voice. Thank you so much. Um before I call on our sister Ezada Tochi, please, I want to just um um tell also announce our websites so you don't go give uh the, our liberation money to the criminals. Please, our website is W W dot I P O B in U S A dot org slash donate. And also biaprepublicgov dot org. If you have any question, please visit our website, our um the contact of our admins are there. We, we, we ask that everybody in the U S A should come on board and let's do the needful. God bless you all. Thank you. Our Ezada Tochi, please, you have the mic. Our Ezada Tochi.
Um no, I think she leaves the mic. She's right here. It's right in her hand.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, she is.
Yes.
Yeah, she's there. Yes.
And she might not need a camera, but let her speak. Do you need a camera?
Um. I'm trying to um put on my camera.
Um, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, thank you, everybody. Thank you so much for um being with us, coming to our U S, uh North and South America. Um before I say my closing prayer, I want to use this opportunity to appreciate my A P M for the wonderful voice. You know, uh he uses singing, O G E T, O G E T, come on. He has a very sweet voice and I'm giving uh fifty Jema for it and I don't know that my A P M is a very good musician.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, you, you go, go see that, go see.
I, I appreciate everybody. I appreciate our A P M. I appreciate all his cabinet members. All protocols observed. We thank you all for coming to be with us today. We are so happy from the bottom of our heart. We so, we are so happy. We appreciate it. Uh before we go, uh let us say a little prayer to uh uh to thank our Lord for making it possible for, for all of us to be here today. Let us pray. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Almighty God, we thank you uh for the opportunity which you have given us to be here today. We thank you for the long life. We thank you for the good health which have given to us. We thank you for the life of our leader, uh Mazinam Dekanu. We thank you for also for the life of our uh P M. We pray that very soon that uh that all of them will come out and be with us and then we glorify your name. We also thank you for our A P M that is standing on his behalf. We thank you for the all the strength and energy that you have given to him so that he will stand on the behalf of our P M and then participate and see that everything is going on well. We pray Almighty God to bless us, bless everybody, bless uh Biafrans in the homeland, bless us here in the North and South America, bless everybody that has come to be with us. For the long life, we pray for the prosperity, we pray uh for um even uh for uh all our places of work. We also pray that
Need the camera, but let her speak. Do you need the camera?
No, 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 I don't need. Can I please speak, please?
I'm trying to um put on my camera.
Please, somebody is praying, oh. Mute. Thank you. Sorry, Sister Tochi, go ahead.
A P M, are you muting me?
Okay.
Somebody is speaking.
Being with us, coming to our U S, uh North and South America. Um before I say my I'm mute. So, mute.
Okay, go ahead.
You go now.
I, okay, I was muted. Oh, okay. I'm almost ending my prayer. I pray in the name of Chukwokike Abiam. Let God bless each and every one of us. Amen. He say, he say.
He say, he say, he say. Thank you so much for that wonderful prayer.
Last time, please. Please, next time when someone is talking, we all can hear, we know, we have to, you know, uh mute ourselves so we don't interrupt, please. Okay, and uh actually today, I go, you know, there's uh a good news that, you know, uh there's uh there's a mail that uh that came in for us that is a good news. So in, in days to come, we're gonna relate that to Biafrans. So uh it's a mail that I've been waiting for for some time now, but it came in in favor of, of Biafra. So it's a good news. Uh in days to come, Biafrans, we know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow.
Alright.
Thank you. We're starting the week with
That's a nice way to end it.
Blessings.
Uh, Nde wo. Nde wo.
I don't, anyway, I have to run somewhere. I was while I'm on here, I was um on this YouTube, you know, following up. So I just came back in right now.
Okay.
So I thank everybody, my A P M, I thank you. Uh Sister Chinna.
Nde wo.
God bless you.
God bless you.
My Azemani, honorable, you are blessed. Our media warriors, we appreciate you all.
God, God bless you too.
Canada and the U S are one.
Uh huh.
Fortunately. Uh uh Trump want to make it worse. Uh but we not go believe. Hallelujah.
Amen.
So anyway, I appreciate the speech of our A P M. I followed him on the YouTube where I was listening. It was a speech sitting with knowledge and focus and garnished with truths and honesty. So for that speech, uh Canada, we just give him a take hundred and fifty a Jema to say thank you, sir. When all hopes were lost, when nothing seemed to be moving, when the enemy was rejoicing and jumping up and down, thinking that they have won. There was a silent lion walking somewhere who had just rung up. And being the king of the bush, everybody is looking for a cover.
Uh huh.
A P M, thank you, sir, for your leadership scale. We appreciate and we are happy. And we know that when P M comes out, your name will be written in the right place and we know where it is. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody, all the admins and the reps. We appreciate you all. All our Amazons. Our Amazons, you know yourself, those that fought in Finland and refused to sit where they, they want us to sit.
Hmm.
Took the front seat and said, no way. That's how it happened.
Yes.
Thank you all and God bless you. I'm sorry I came a little bit late.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, honorable Nena. Uh we appreciate your donation.
A lot of good people. Why you don't want my boss, uh President, to, to negotiate and Canada? We, we, you want buy Canada?
Honestly, as we are looking for Biafra, that's why we must not support him to buy Canada. So that the next day, Canadians will not be doing what we are doing today. So let them stay where they are. We are brothers and sisters. You are senior brother. We are genius brother. So let's stay as we did. Hey, they want to collect everything. They want to collect Canada. They want to collect Iceland. They want to collect um uh what do you call it? Uh
Gaza.
Gaza. They want to collect Panama. They want no, no.
No, he is not collecting Canada. He just want us to be brothers and sisters.
Uh huh, uh huh. Responsible brothers and responsible brothers and sisters, yeah.
A collector. But he's doing a good job anyway.
Yeah, he's doing a good job, yeah.
Nice job, yeah.
Nde wo.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, state admins. Thank you, my rep. Thank you, our honorable um European rep, honorable Obi. Thank you so much. Thank you, our great media. Thank you, uh Texas admins and our Texas brethren who came out in mass to support this uh great event. It was a very um successful one. I, I just want to uh say thank you. We appreciate. And as many that are still hanging on the wall, please calm down off your high horses and put your hands in your pocket and support your own liberation. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh check your, check your telegram.
I will. Appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless you, Texas family.
You have, uh you still have about two thousand four hundred and fifty people still watching even at this.
Wow.
Let me use this opportunity to, to ask if any of us read what Babangida just said about the African war or Nigerian war and they could.
Yes.
You see, and Abiam also
I'm gonna, I'm gonna book an ad that we can stay.